It's nine AM and I'd like to welcome everybody to the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three work session of the Limestone County Commission. Under public comment, I'll let Ellen introduce these fine people. They got a little award they're gonna give out today, so go ahead, Ellen.
Benny Hanna.
If you don't mind, Ms. Hanna, step right over to the microphone and just...
Good morning, everyone. My name is...
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
My name is Benny Hanna, Chairman of the Public Service and Heroism Committee. With me today is Dudley Burwell, President of the Tennessee Valley Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution, and also Chip Farr, our Color Guard Representative. We're all members of the Tennessee Valley Chapter, and we're all bloodline descendants of someone who fought in the American Revolutionary War or participated in that revolution. We're all about history, patriotism, and education, specifically the founding fathers and the documents that they produced. Today, we're here to honor a member of the Limestone County Sheriff's Department. I would like to ask Lieutenant Jay Stenit to come up front with me. And while he's coming up, I'll quickly read a little bit of the description, if you don't mind, about Jay. Jay Stenit has been employed at the Limestone County Sheriff's Office since nineteen ninety-four. He has worked as a dispatcher, correction officer, patrol deputy, patrol supervisor, investigator, and investigation supervisor over the years. Jay is currently a lieutenant in the Investigation Division. He's very diligent in his duties and attempts to help everyone, whether it be his coworkers or the community. Jay has not forgotten about the service-to-community aspect of his job. I have even heard it said that Jay works just as hard to find someone's stolen gas can as it does to find someone's stolen car. Jay is an asset to the Limestone County Sheriff's Department, and he is a joy to be around. He often enjoys making ostentious displays or remarks to make others smile and laugh. Jay is currently what every department needs to deal with the dangers and the unknowns that these officers and deputies have to deal with on a daily basis. It gives me great honor to ask our President Dudley Burwell to present Lieutenant Jay Stenit with a certificate and a Medal of Law Enforcement Commendation. Congratulations, Jay. Can we ask your supervisors to come? We have a national magazine that we... That goes out, and we try to get as many of these pictures in the magazine. And we can get the group right here.
While we're posed just a moment, I think all the commissioners want to get up and
want to take a picture with y'all too. Everybody will all get a group photo, and we can... We'll get right here and line up in the front here.
The only problem is, is this table stuff is like...
That doesn't matter.
Okay. But I got y'all. Y'all know.
Thank you. Congratulations, Jay.
One quick final comment is, I would like to see a whole lineup of these individuals up here this coming year, because, you know, a lot of departments think that the things that their employees do is just one of the male stuff. These guys who put especially, put their life on the line, day in, day out, with inspiring E and P's. We would really like to recognize them and share it with the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all so much.
We appreciate y'all.
Yeah.
You're welcome to go on out or whatever you'll do. Well, we'll stop there a second. Thank y'all. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
All right. Ellen, do we have any more public comment?
We do not.
And I want to thank them for their... And I want to thank Jay for his service, you know, one of our own here, won the award. That's a great deal. Thank you, Jay. Moving on, today on the commission meeting, we'll have to approve the minutes from January the third of twenty twenty-three. Does anybody have a discussion with the minutes? All right, no discussion. Moving on, we'll have approved claims, an amount of one million thirty-three thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and seventy-one cents. Anybody got any discussion with any claim or any issue? All right, public king, we'll have none. We'll have one resolution order here today to approve a resolution authorizing the chairman to request allocation from the local assistance of the tribal consistency fund. This right here is two fifty thousand dollar checks, and it will be referred back to like some COVID money and stuff. It is something that one of the other chairmen's county, we're eligible for, so it'll be a hundred thousand dollars coming to the county through this.
We've been getting that every year. Is this the first time?
It's the first time ever, yes. So, one of those things. It's one of these programs that came out when the stuff came out. So, I just wanted to... We got to have it approved, and we got to have it done by February first, I believe is the number. And so, if a hundred thousand dollars a county can get, which is opportunity, we sure did to get that hundred thousand dollars. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right, contracts, agreements, and MOUs and grants, we have none. Budget revisions, we have two, and I'll go through them here and kind of explain, and if we want to break them off, vote on them separate, that's fine. If we want to vote as a whole, that's fine, too. The first one is for the sheriff's office, and it's a... This happened pre to the sheriff that we have in office now and the chief. This is a budget revision to pay for training for two officers that had worked for the county, for the city of Athens, and then they came over to the county before their time was up on the training. By law, it's a state statute law that we are required on the hook to pay the city of Athens for that training, and Drew may alleviate that if we need to, but it's... So, and we actually, years ago, when I worked at the Water Authority, we ran through one of these same issues with an employee that had worked at the Water Authority and got certified water training, and then he didn't work his time out. So, anyways, it's two employees, it's twenty-seven thousand dollar worth of training, and, you know, if you'd have paid for them to go to the police academy, it's the same difference either way, it's a wash. So, I mean, but we had to pay... We got to reimburse the city for the training for those two deputies. If anybody got any questions, if you do, you may want to alleviate to Drew for a legal question there for the law.
You good with that?
Yes, the state law requires that.
What's the timeframe? Once they get certified, they have to stay, if they can hire them?
Two years, I think, is the timeframe. And...
We came out on top on this kind of shirt.
Yeah, I mean, it was really good for... I mean, it's a good deal for us, because we needed the deputies, and they came to us. And like I said, this happened... This is about a three-year ago ordeal, or two years, something like that. So, you know, they were certified, ready to go to work, and we, you know, they already knew the county, so it was... They came right in, went to work. So, that's the way it worked out. Any other questions? All right, if no other questions with that budget revision, the second one on here is one that's been hanging around for quite some time. Commissioner Simon and Commissioner Townsend had asked about it, and what this is, is the budget revision that Chris Becker has requested for the 4H program. And, you know, it's kind of been back and forth. This has been a request for nearly a year now. And I told Chris, if he would go out and hunt somebody to match it, we would kind of work around, and the Farmers Federation has agreed to give five thousand if the county commission would give five thousand. And so, with that being said, I know two commissioners have asked about it, and I mean, it's been back and forth, but that's what that second budget revision is, and it'll be for helping the 4H program in Limestone County. And like I said, they originally requested ten, and he did, got out and done the legwork to get half of it from another organization. So, we're going for half of it, and if that's up to y'all, and however y'all want to do that. Anybody got any discussion with it?
No, it's just a one-time thing.
It's a one-time ordeal, and...
It must be this year.
Uh-huh.
So...
It just kind of makes up the subsidy.
It makes the subsidy.
The field agent can basically still work in the schools, is that correct?
And if this program doesn't go through, there's two or three schools in the county that will lose their 4H program because of the funding for that lady that does the position. And he's promised that he's going to get out next year, and we're going to work around this thing. But, you know, it kind of got... It was... This has been going on since last year, you know, and I mean, it takes time. He's asked delegation, he's asked everybody, they hadn't been to session and all, so he has requested it, and we, like I said, we've been back and forth. He originally wanted ten, and we've cut it to five, we've cut it to half, and the Farmers Federation's going to pay half, so...
Chris has done a good job trying to get the funding.
And he has. And if anybody has any discussion, or y'all want to vote on it separate, that's fine, or y'all want to vote on them both together, it doesn't matter to me.
I'm good either way, it doesn't matter.
I'm banning it's fine with me.
All right, like I said...
I don't really have any problem with the five thousand dollars, but I'd like to say something here.
Okay, yes, that's what it's all about.
That's an education project started by Auburn University. Education's budget this year, they got a billion more dollars than what their budget called for. So, if education's going to start programs, they ought to fund it. People don't get funding if they want, and then they come to the commission wanting it as kind of a last resort. Like I said, I don't have any problem with the five thousand dollars. It'll be beneficial to the 4H program, but if education's got a billion extra dollars, why are they coming to the commission for wanting money?
And on another note, talk about that education. Me and LaDon's been working on helping the school system with a strategic plan for the next five years, and that's what the conversation we're going to have in that strategic plan is, you know, if they would come to the... You know, it's, you know, I mean, it's one of those type deals, you know, it's kind of drug around, if nobody's done it, and, you know, I told him, I said, "Next year", you know, "We'll have to figure it out between now and next year", so... And, you know, like I said, if he... I'm all, you know, when I do... And we do appropriations for all kinds of things that really have not a whole lot to do with county government. But, you know, on another note of it is, when a person goes out and hunts half the money, it's like a match money, you know, I mean, it's, you know, and we are, you know, getting people to help match. So, I do applaud them for going out and hunting the five thousand dollars, and like I said, so... And I know that two commissioners had really asked about it, so that's kind of where we got with it. We cut it in half, and so there we go. So, anybody got any more discussion with it? No more discussion? Now, move on to the next thing on here. Emergency purchase, we have none. Board appointments, we have none. And award of bids, we have three different bids here to award today. And if anybody wants to break one of them off separate, that's fine, but I'll go through and kind of explain. You know, of course, one of them is for jail uniforms, just kind of standard, and the last one on here is for envelopes. But the one in the middle is for, we have worked on this project for several years, and I know Nick with Motorola's up here, they're the award... They would be the award winner bid here. But the... This is a project that's been worked for years and years. I know this has been several... And it's a P-25, it's a digital radio system to update the county, and we're going to fund this through the ARPA money. It's, you know, we... Which one of these projects... That's one of the things that we had listed our, you know, control money to go to, and I just wanted y'all to be aware, I mean, we can break it off separate, we can vote on them all together, but I mean, they're... That's pretty much where it's at. And on the other one, we had another, we would bid radios, but we're going to rebid it, we're going to change some stuff on it, but this is just a ward to build the system. This is just the network and the towers and the infrastructure, which will take, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, like up till maybe the fall to get started on, to get it done or something?
That's the plan, sir.
Again, so that'll be... It's a little timeframe here. So, we... This project's got to roll before we can even think about buying a radio, so that... So, this right here will be for... And it will be a hundred percent paid through the ARPA funding, so... Anybody got any discussion?
This project's probably been on discussion, what, eight years, probably? I would say that we've been trying to go back and forth to find funding, and the city's already moved forward with their portion, so this will give the city and the county a whole new communication system to be able to clear up some of the different radio use we have now, be able to utilize one, actually one system, sort of having submate repeater sites across the county. So, I think it'd be a good move for the county and the city.
Is this all our costs, Mr. Chairman? Is, I mean, I think EMA and nine-one-one?
It was several...
Sheriff's Department?
This is our half. It was several factors, factions with that, but the city is... And Nick may want to alleviate on this, but it was a... It was kind of, the city kind of went, they done their portion out, and it's... Now, a lot of this, and now, not all of this is for the system, a lot of it's for tower sites, and it's also for...
Consoles.
Consoles and things like this. It's a whole lot of other moving parts in here besides just the system itself.
This is our part.
Yeah, this is our portion. This is what the ARPA money will pay for this portion.
Yeah, I think what had been floated around previously that y'all had seen, dollar figures on, that was over a long-term, like contract track payback thing. This would be, this would do away with that long-term payback. This is just doing everything all at once, so that's why the numbers look a little different than what you had, what had originally been floated around.
And it's also some maintenance contracts and things like this in here in this price, too.
There's, yeah, there's three, we've got, I think, three years of some maintenance and things like that that are built into this, so... But anyway, this gets us the base system to work off of. We do have a bid on radios that we have to redo. It came to our attention that there's some uses, or some functions that we have based off of this awarded bid that we really need to spec into the radios for. So, we chose to... We chose as a group that was reviewing the bids that we really need to spec those, spec those functions into the system so that we have full utilization of what we will be receiving on the infrastructure side.
Okay.
And on another note of it is, too, this is a, you know, this system gets us on into the future for a long ways, and it'll be, once it's over with, and thankful for the ARPA system that we... Any other way, I don't know how we ever would have funded it without the ARPA funding, so... It is, like I said, there's nothing coming out of the general fund, nothing out of the county, it's just a hundred percent there. Any more discussion with either one of these?
Just, this is kind of off that, but what about our repairs, our improvements to the jail? What's going on there?
We have actually had, and I'll explain it to you, but we've actually got one portion of it back and got to move forward with the next portion, and Drew may alleviate on that. You may, about the jail, the renovation of the jail?
I hate that it's a general description, but it's in progress, Commissioner.
I think that we, I think we have to acquire the services of an architect, I think, so we have to send out an RFP for the architectural services.
Just to complete what we've already done?
Yeah, it is. We have, we have some, we do have some plans that were associated with the original, with the original architectural drawings, but they have to be updated to current standards. And so, it's not that that's a... We're not looking at that as a large expense, but we do have to go through that process.
Have to have a set of stamped plans.
We do.
And I think that's kind of where the RFP has gotten back to at this point, so...
Yeah, so we have to acquire those services, so...
And that's, and that's one of our other ARPA funds that will be paid for through the ARPA. There was done with a little less than ten million dollars that had to be paid for, and that was one of our other projects when the ARPA funding was the jail. I know the sheriff is, we had a conversation with him the other day about it, and that's part of the... It's the, it and the mental health center is moving forward where we're going to help add on to the mental health building, and so that's where that's at. Those three projects are in the works. But this one right here has become a free revision, and we've got the bid on it, so this one portion is out of the way. All right, so any more discussion, any more bids to award? I know we kind of got off on some other projects there, but anybody got any discussion with any other thing? All right, personnel action and staffing policies, we have four or five here on here today, and I'll go through them. First one will be to approve to transfer Sidney Townsend from transport deputy to a school resource officer, it'll be effective the seventeenth of this month. And next will be to approve to hire Jonathan Moray as a corrections officer, effective the seventeenth of this month. That's pending a drug screening. And number three will be to approve to hire Danjuma Stevenson as a corrections officer, effective January the seventeenth, pending a drug screening, and a little stop in terms of those three. If anybody doesn't have any issues, we'll just take all three of those up. Those are all sheriff's department hires, and if y'all got any issue with any one of them individually or something, we can change them around, but that way, we just vote one time on those three, if everybody's fine with that. And anybody got any discussion with any one of the three? All right, moving on to number four, we have a couple promotions out in District Two, which would be Daxton Gilbert and Spencer Wimbrow from Equipment Operator Two to Equipment Operator Three, and these are a couple of Danny's employees, and, I mean, I'm sure that they've got all of their training and time in, and have got CDLs and all that, and you're going to need to alleviate on any, Danny?
Spencer has his Class A.
Okay.
I was pleased to, for him to get that. I think there's a shortage of that countywide. Dax has come a long way, and he's, he's ready.
And that's, you know, that's a good thing about, you know, hiring in like a county, you know, you hire like Equipment Operator One, you move up to Two, then to Three, and, you know, I want to thank these guys for putting effort forward to get the things that needed to get that point, and plus, they make it a better asset for the county. So, any more discussion with either one of those? Congratulations. All right, number five on here, and this is just on here for discussion, it's nothing to be voted on today. This is a discussion that's kind of been floating around there, and I just want to get in an open meeting, have y'all's opinion on this situation, which is time clocks. You know, we operate still with a paper card system that is where you are, you know, it's a honor system, and everybody's more than honest with it, but I mean, it's a card system where you pencil in what you do, and it's a whole lot of paperwork and a whole lot of trail to where, you know, all modern-day companies and businesses have a time system. And it would be so much easier on the accounting side of it, and on the side of it is, the record-keeping, you know? I mean, in the human era, it's human era, and the more, the more times you write something down, the more times you do this, pencil it in. I mean, we've actually had some issues here lately to where, like a holiday, where somebody didn't write out a holiday, and, you know, all we do is just key the numbers in, what's on the key, and when you key it in, the lady didn't get paid for the holiday, and, you know, which it wasn't our fault, you know, it was just one of those things that happens, and, you know, and for... That would alleviate a lot of this situations like that, and it would make our, you know, payroll system just so much easier, because we had to run so hard to try to get payroll, you know, get time cards in, you got to enter them. You got to, you got, you know, when they bring a paper card in, the lady at the payroll has to enter every card and has to go through every card, and you've got three hundred employees at some times, it's a, it's a task, you know? And I mean, if you've got a holiday coming up to where you got to get everything turned in to pay this day, to pay that day, and, you know, there's several different clock systems out there. Hadn't really gave it a lot of thought to which brand, which system, or whatever, you know, some of them are where you clock in with phone, some are where you do it at your computer. I mean, we can, there's several different avenues we could go there. I just wanted y'all's opinion and y'all's thoughts. So, I mean, it would make the payroll side of things so much easier. So, I mean, that would be... Anybody got any thoughts, process, or any input? I mean, this is nothing for vote today, it's just to talk about.
I favor it. We're maybe the last county in Alabama doing manual time cards. Like you say, it kills me to see her sitting there, having to type that in a half a day or a day. I don't know really how long it takes her, but we need to go to a computerized time card system.
Well, the biggest thing I'm worried about is, you know, I mean, we make errors and make mistakes, too, and I mean, you know, when you mess with somebody's pay or something like that, it's their livelihood, you know? And I mean, if we go to an, you know, a computerized system that automatically runs it in there, you know, like a holiday or whatever, it makes life, you know, easier on the payroll system, and plus, it makes it more accurate, I would think. And I know with the sheriff's office now, you know, a lot of them, you know, when they leave their house, they can, you know, they radio in, so I mean, when they radio in, they can key them in. I mean, the time card system for them would be a simple six, you know, as far as dispatchers and deputies and all, and I mean, but as far as the other side of it, you know, we'd have to go to some kind of clock system at, you know, where habit goes, but it's just, it's just thought and process, and anybody has any input? I mean, that's a... I just wanted to, you know, offer y'all's chance to give y'all's opinion.
I favor it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the offices, I mean, like, you know, your revenue office or offices like that, Mike could, could deal with it. I know Joseph wants to comment on it.
I'm for it.
You are for it. I mean, those would be great for these offices up here, but I know the sheriff's department would probably... The way we work, the districts, per district, you know, we get called out, and you don't, you don't want to run to someplace, and like you said, it's something we need to look at if it's going to be, if it can be done by phone or whatever, you know?
I talked to the girls the other day. They were looking at it where you could check in by phone.
Okay. Well, I'm sure the offices would, it would help them out a whole lot and probably take a lot off of you, wouldn't it, Joseph? And, but, yeah, sure. But Sheriff, how do you feel about it?
I think it would definitely be helpful. I agree. But we probably want the last county to be in favor. There are some things that I would want to address with y'all to make sure that they're...
Yeah.
When you check in by phone, does that person really have heard? You know, is there...
Yeah.
Tell that they are actually showing up or they're doing their stuff.
I ask about...
In overtime, if they click out, but they haven't worked or got approved for that overtime, I just, how does that all work? And I'm sure those, I know lots of people doing it in those places, but I just have questions and see.
Sure.
And that's why we got it out here today, you know, just for the conversation, moving forward with it.
And I think it's possible when they check in for the phone to note their GIS, GPS location.
Yeah, I think it's something to need to be...
Okay.
Then we want to have a couple of systems, so we can kind of look at, see what we, you know, the options that are out there.
And I know it would be, it would be...
Advantages would be...
And I know it's not a fit-all, one system for the whole county, because we have so many different departments, but, you know, as we add employees, I mean, we're fixing to add probably fifteen employees in the solid waste department, so there's fifteen more time cards that the ladies are going to have to go through, and I mean, and that's, and as time progresses, you know, we, matter of fact, we've got another employee in here and welcome here in a little while today, you know, we, you know, we adding employees daily, and I mean, this list right here, you know, you know, as we grow, we will need more employees, and that's just, I mean, it's going to, you know, it'd be, and I know the Water Authority, they went through it several years ago when I worked out there, and we all worked in the field. I mean, so it's ways it will work in the field, because I...
What did they go to?
We had a, if you was a supervisor, you had it where you, when they radioed you or whatever, you know, when like you called, it would actually log through that, and then we, the employees, like if you was coming to get a piece of equipment, we actually had a time card system to where you went in and clocked in, and they gave you an hour on top of the time you worked, thirty-minute drive time, you know, if you was coming to the, you know, that was, it was just a kind of a rule of thumbs, is if you worked, you know, if you got in, you know, if they called you at, if you got in there and you clocked in at seven-thirty, and you clocked out at eight-thirty, they would actually give you an hour, thirty-minute drive time if you was working overtime on a call on a water leak, and that was their system. Now, there's, there are tons of systems out there. I know in a lot of, you know, the utilities, you know, a lot of them have a, they give a call time, you know, a lot of times they'll give seven hours a week to take call that week, you know, I mean, to where they're the person that's to go with out if something happens, so... And I know, it's several differences, I just want to know y'all's opinion on how we need to move forward looking into this.
It'd be worth looking into.
Definitely worth looking into.
You got any comments, Derek?
Yeah, but we're talking about all hourly employers, we just don't pick and choose who we...
It would be, I mean, no, it would be everybody. It would be all hourly employees.
That's my only thing, that we just say, well, we don't, this partners don't use it, but how they work over here, we're not going to do that. That's the only biggest concern I get. If you go to the telephone, you know, all the folks, we're asking a person to use their personal property for county business, or if you pay them travel time, if we pay them travel time, we liable for them traveling to and from work if something happens.
So that's concerns, I'd have a bunch of travel time.
Yeah.
But far as my biggest thing is, I haven't got any issue with going to it. And I know the departments don't look a little different, but I want to make sure that we do it fairly across the board.
And I mean, I think that it would be, I mean, the, the ideal situation would be to get away from the paper written time cards altogether as a whole. I mean, that would be the, you know, it would be a hundred percent to where it's computerized, it's a time card system of some sort or some fashion. And I know we would probably have to have, the problem with the county, the way it's structured, we'd probably have to have two or three different systems. But it would all essentially go back to one master computer to where it, you know, when you pushed it, you know, it keyed into a program somehow in there.
It needs to be electronic to do it with the paper cards, because paper cards don't really change anything. Look, if that one person could punch you up, buddy, if you want to.
I haven't, no, I hadn't checked with any other counties, um, I've just, this is just a conversation. I know that several years ago, the commission had this same conversation and, you know, I just, you know, we have went probably up thirty or forty employees in the last few years. And I mean, when you, the more employees you add, the more workloads you add, and then it's just, it's time to look at where we need to go.
That'd probably be a place you could look at different type systems, different counties and see how they like it.
That's right, you're correct. And it's just, this is exploratory thing, but anybody got any more discussion? All right, so I, I guess um, we will move forward with looking at what kind of systems are out there and what the options are. And probably have some meetings with some department heads like sheriff and all, one on one, to see their concerns and talk with it and stuff. This is nothing that's coming up in the near future, it's just something that's to bring up to the attention, so. All right, now, moving on, any more discussion with either one of these items? Mary and Crease, as we have one on here today, um, anybody got any discussion with that? I know um, Commissioner Barstow had asked why it was retroactive, and what had happened was it was actually was missed last year by accident. And it was Leila sitting up in the stands, everyone thanked her for her service. But uh, it was just, we wanted to run it through a meeting to let everybody know why it was, what had happened there. It was just one of those, it was, it was submitted whatever, somehow or another along the way, it's like paper trail, there goes paper trail, it was missed through a paper trail. Because we do it actually a hand evaluation and paperwork in it, which is actually missed, so. All right, any more discussion with that? Moving forward, engineers report, Commissioner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have a couple of um, couple of things. One is our, our standard subdivisions. Uh, we, uh, we have Kennesaw Creek Phase Three. Um, this is a major for final approval, creating forty-one lots in district two. And we have Lappington Acres, um, this is a minor, so it'll be for preliminary and final, creating two lots in district four. So those are the two subdivisions I've got to present to you today. Um, in the, the business meeting, the commission meeting, um, I will be presenting our, our Rebuild Alabama Annual Report. This is a report that's required by law, once we close out all of our projects from the previous year. So required to do that in January, so I'll just kind of, I'll give everybody just kind of a, a update on that. So, so I, I'll take a few minutes then, but that's all I have to, or at this moment.
Anybody got any discussion with either one of the subdivision or anything from Mark?
Uh, I do. Um, we started doing subdivision regulations probably what, six months ago?
We've, uh, well, yeah, we've been, we've been working on them.
We've got some help now, so I'd kind of like to bring that to the forefront and, and maybe get a, a, a report on that every commission meeting.
All right, and then um, like you mentioned, as far as help, I, I would like, I, I introduce Heath Black to you. He's our new, new assistant county engineer, so um, he'll be working with us and taking over a lot of the workload for subdivisions and drainage and, and those kinds of things, so.
Looking forward to that, I guess.
So I, yeah, yeah, so, so, so he'll be working with us, so like I said, just uh, just wanted to bring that up as well. So we, we look forward to working with him. That's all, guys.
All right, next on here, under other business, we have a removal of a tractor, a fifty-one oh five E from district four. And um, Lieutenant Stinn, if you can find this tractor, we'll, we'll task you with that opportunity. Um, we're removing it from inventory because somebody buried it, and then if, if anybody's got it, we'd appreciate you bringing it back, um. But uh, so naturally, you know, we're on a depreciation roll and it was several years old and it was just, you know, we're just, to get it off our inventory, we have to remove it. But it um, it has been stolen, if anybody has any leads on it, we would appreciate any affirmation we have. Um, like I said, if it just showed back up, we'd be happy, so it's a, so what it was stolen out off of Easter A Road, what, a year or so ago? And we've waited, you know, hoping it would resurface, but it has not, so. Marsh Road, and so it um, this was, that's what this is about. Any more discussion about this item? All right, then the transfer of the following from engineering to uh, to the, from district four to engineering, this is going along with our striping truck. It's a Batuminus asphalt adhesive machine. It took me a week to learn how to say that word. Um, but that is a, uh, but that is for putting down pavement markers. Um, so that will be transferred to district, from district four to the engineering as a transfer of equipment. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right, the next thing on here, three will be to approve the sale of the twenty-three Mack dump trucks through JM Woods. And it'll either be at the March twenty-first or the twenty-fourth of twenty-three sale, or the June of twenty-three sale. It's according to when we get our new ones in stock, we're not going to, we're just proven to sell them, but we will not sell them until we have new ones. So we either, it may either sell March or it may either sell June. And now, Mark, I've got a question on you about that. One of those pull tractors we do own?
One of them we, that's not included in the loan that we have, it's, it's owned outright by the county, yes.
And if we decided to go ahead and sell it in March, I mean, that would be fine with me if, you know, because I guess it's listed there. But that, because if we don't get the, we, we're not going to sell the other one if we hadn't got one. But if we, we have got an extra pull tractor because we have actually ordered a Lowboy, and it's been a year in the makings, and I believe they forgot how to build one. I don't know exactly what happened there, but
It's been a while, every time I check with them, it's another two or three months.
Well, I, I, the, the same guy might have got our Lowboy that got this tractor. He may be hauling our tractor over, so I don't know. But uh, anyway, so we might, if I, I don't have any issue.
But we have, but we do have, um, which is the next item on the list, we do have two Lowboys to replace the two, the tractors that we have, we have those. I, I do think that the sale will be strong this year just because um, it has been the last few years. And, and you still can't, you still can't purchase uh, equipment like this, it's just still, it's not available. So um, I, my, I, I think that if we take the, the profits that are made from the sale of these and try to buy as much of the, the replacements outright as we can, that will limit our exposure in the future. So that's just my suggestion when this sells, um, but that's something we can, we can discuss when it comes time to look for financing for, or approve financing for the other track, or the other equipment.
All right, all right, I guess uh, he's already kind of explained number four with this. Number four would be to approve the purchase and financing of ten new twenty-four model Kenworth T-eight ADSs and then a dump trucks. And it'll be the two twenty-twenty-four Kenworth eight-eighty Lowboy tractors. And we actually approved to purchase the bid for these trucks in a commission meeting or two ago. So that would, you know, that's two different separate things that's going on there. So that would be for the purchase of Kenwars to replace these Mikes. So anybody got any discussion with that? And like Martin said, my suggestion would be, let's try to pay as much as we can out of the profits of it this year. Because if we're, one of these days, we're going to get, we're going to get caught up in that, we don't, we want to try to get as many as we own as we can, so.
I'm like, one of these days, that's going to go the other way.
It is.
But we'll just have to be content with what we've made over the years, we'll have to outweigh that. Now, whether we can guess when it's going to go the other way or not would be
I think our best, our best situation is to just keep everything paid down as much as we can with the profits, and then that limits our exposure. So if we, if it does go the other way, we should still be able to sell for what the note is, but, but we should be able to buy cheaper too.
Right.
So, I mean, uh, the goal is to keep it on a rotation where, where we can have new equipment without it coming out of the, the county general fund.
We've essentially been using new equipment for nothing.
Exactly.
And making, getting paid to
And in many cases, we've gotten paid to, to, to use that equipment for a year.
Any more discussion with the dump trucks?
Do you think we'll get them back? I mean, are we, are we on task for March? I mean, you think our new ones?
We, we are on track for March.
Okay. Because I know that's the last I heard.
They actually, they actually started construction of our chassis this month.
And hopefully we have them by March to sell them in the March sale, but if we don't, we just went ahead and approved for the June sale, just in case. Because we probably will go ahead and sell the one road tractor in the, that we own outright to go ahead and get it out of the way, so. All right, moving forward, number five here, and this is a, to authorize an offer for a purchase of real property on highway one twenty-seven and authorize the chairman to execute all necessary documents for complying, for compliance, completion of purchase of the property based on an offer of a price of, the price we offered was nineteen thousand per acre, and it can be from nineteen to a little over twenty acres. So we just put from nineteen to twenty-two acres because there's a partial there that's got to be surveyed out to see how that, the true documentation is. And um, and so in any other considerations by, recommended by the county attorney. So anybody got any discussion with that?
Appreciate Mark working on that like he did because he had to stay on top of it.
Yeah, this, this property would be large enough for us to meet our current needs. We, we know, we've been talking for years that our current needs with the engineering department is to, to have, have a place that we could store all of this expensive equipment that we've been buying and putting into the road, so we can do the roads, be able to store that under a cover. And um, where we're sitting now is, is, I don't know, it's probably fifty, sixty years old and, and we don't have enough shed space. So we've been talking about that, and then with solid waste coming on board, we, we need a location to operate solid waste out of as well. Um, and so this property would be large enough for that, plus give us additional room for any other future services that, that kind of need to be consolidated to a location.
I think you had animal shelter.
I, I know that that's been discussed, because, because we don't know how long what we have will continue, but it's, but, but this would give us room to be able to make any, any plans that we would need for the future. But, but um, but we could move forward with making sure that solid waste and engineering have somewhere that they can go to. We're, we're, we're spending a lot of money on, on expensive equipment, and we need to keep that in as good a shape as we can. And, and having a place that it can be out of the weather is, is important.
And on another conversation here too, and I talked with the sheriff the other day, for us to complete this jail renovation, they using the, what portion of that building there now is for storage. So they'll have to have another storage building or something like that when all this starts to take place. So maybe all this can take place to where one of the herbicide bays or something, you know, where their trucks were, that they can use for storage and have a good locking storage spot, you know? Because that's all got to take place from this jail expansion because, because they use that jail portion that's not finished now for storage. And that would be almost on site of the jail, so I mean, it's close enough to where it would be a storage facility for them too, so. Um, and then plus, um, we have a, you know, with coming on with the recycling and stuff, that's portion of the plan is to maybe put some of the stuff back there with recycling and things. Our other property is already needed.
That's the thing.
We already need the other property that we're already on for other projects, so.
You've hit on the growth as far as the personnel, but the growth is in service, and services provided. If um, it just, it requires us to have somewhere additional to um, to handle that, handle that growth. And so that's what this is about. I think it's a, it's a, I think we, I mean, this is, I, I, and has, I believe is a fair market price. We actually all approved the sale of a piece of property, forty acres, it was about three quarters of a mile from here. Y'all approved the sale of that at twenty-five thousand dollars an acre not too long ago. So, so we're, we're within fair market, I believe, that, that by the time you include that and then some other sales in the area, I think that this, I think we're going to be able to, to be within fair market, which is what, what we're required to do um, in any time we uh, acquire any property.
All right. All right, any more questions about the property? All right, moving on, number six here, and that'd be to appoint Colin Daly to the Tennessee Valley Youth Services Board, effective January the seventeenth of twenty-twenty-three. And this board, Commissioner Black said on it, and um, they reached out to me the other day and asked me would I be on the board? And I told them, I said, I kind of hesitated a little bit because I've got a blue million things going on, but I know it's a great service, it's a portion of the county. And um, I told um, Commissioner Long, yes, he's the president of the board, I said, yes, I'll be honored to serve on it. So that would be just for me to serve, to fill, and then they meet four times a year, he said. So that's uh, and that's for the youth services over in the Muscle Shoals area, so. Um, any discussion with that? And I want to thank Jason publicly for serving on that board for so long. He was, he was real good and really good advocate of that situation, so. Maybe I can carry on what he's got started over there. All right, we have no executive session today, so we will recess and we'll, till, I would say, um, for fifteen minutes, we'll be back at five minutes to ten, how's that?